Good morning, all. Call the School Board of St. Lucie County Regular Meeting of July 14th, 2020 to order, and extend warm greetings to all in our audience, whether you be here in person or joining us virtually. It's nice to see so many folks with us this morning. If you would, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, America, indivisible, liberal, free, and just as a whole.
And our treasure hunter pledge?
I am committed to serve for all talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and you. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. You may be seated. We do have two public hearings before us today. The first one is the proposed transfer of the Means Court Administrative Center to the Fort Pierce Redevelopment Agency. Are there any that wish to address this particular item? Yes. Welcome to the podium. If you would please just state your name and...
Good morning. My name is Kalida Scott. I'm the Lincoln Park Revitalization Coordinator and Grants Administration Manager for the City of Fort Pierce, and I'm here to graciously accept the transfer of the deed to the City of Fort Pierce.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, for being with us today.
Thank you.
Any others that wish to address this particular item? Mr. Superintendent will receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the proposed transfer of Means Court Administrative Center to Fort Pierce Redevelopment Agency as submitted.
Moving acceptance, Madam Chair. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. The second item on our public hearing is the charter with Somerset Academy for Somerset Academy Bethany. Are there any here that wish to address that particular item? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent will receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the charter with Somerset Academy Incorporated for Somerset Academy Bethany as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Mills and Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. The public hearing portion of this meeting is now closed, and we will move to our special orders of business. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to everyone and everyone in the audience, and thank you for being here. Also, we sent out an email this morning about eight o'clock, about an hour ago, to all employees, letting them know about this meeting, letting them know that Mr. Spurber would be presenting. It'll also be recorded. It'll be on the YouTube page for the community members. Anyone that wishes to, that can't watch it right now, is welcome to see it later on. But in light of everything that's going on, I thought it'd be important for us to hear from the experts. So we have Mr. Clint Spurber, who is the Health Officer and Administrator from the Department of Health in St. Lucie County. He's going to make a presentation to the board and would be available to answer questions from the school board members as well at the conclusion of his presentation. So I appreciate Mr. Spurber and some of his team members for coming over. So, Mr. Spurber, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board, Mr. Jen, for the opportunity to share information about St. Lucie County and how COVID is responding in the community. So we created a presentation that will look at the governor's benchmarks as far as reopening phases. We are also going to look at CDC guidance, specific data from St. Lucie County as far as how the virus is circulating, as well as, we'll briefly discuss, the Department of Education Executive Order. And finally, we will conclude with the role of the Health Department. As you know, we do have our nursing program that works extremely closely with Mr. Tomlinson and his staff, as well as, you know, prior to COVID, whenever there's any type of outbreak, we get very involved with our epidemiology program, as well as our unintentional injury program and a lot of other services from a partnership that we work extremely close with you guys on. So, the governor, he set out a couple months ago his plan for Florida's recovery that does look at a safe, smart, and step-by-step phase approach to opening up Florida. So what we look at from a health perspective are a few different metrics. One will call syndromic surveillance, and this looks at hospital emergency data. And this is a program called ESSENCE. And ESSENCE is a program that's in well over half of the hospitals, if not more, in the entire country. Just about every hospital in the state of Florida also uses it. So when somebody presents at a hospital, they see a triage nurse, they let the nurse know what they are there for, what their chief complaints are. This information is inputted into that system, ESSENCE. So prior to COVID, for several years, we monitored this program to determine what type of viruses or flus or syndromes are circulating around the country. So that's one metric that we look at. Another that we will look at is from a disease perspective, the downward trajectory in documenting COVID cases and/or, or it does say or, the trajectory of positive cases, in total cases. And then also, what is our capacity in St. Lucie County to manage COVID patients? Can tell you daily, I speak to the CEOs of the hospitals through texts. We have our other staff who speak to their counterparts, the infection control practitioners. It's extremely important for us to have a good handle from a public health perspective to understand, really, what is happening in our hospital system, because they really are where the rubber meets the road. So when we look at, over the past several weeks, now this is going to be our influenza report, so when we look at influenza, what we are looking at are the chief complaints. When somebody goes to a hospital, they're looking at fever, cough, and sore throat. So you can see over the past several weeks that our trend lines have been increasing. And I think it's sort of been evident also with the increased case counts that we've been having. So that is in line. The next one is our COVID-like symptoms. Now with COVID, we are also looking at shortness of breath. So it's the same syndromes that we look at for influenza, but it's also looking at shortness of breath. And a term that is used in the medical community when we're looking at different types of medical codes, it's our ICD-10 code. So it's incorporating a lot of other types of complaints or symptoms somebody could have, including chills, muscle pain, loss or taste of smell. So you can see also over the past several weeks that that trend has been going up. Now this one's a little bit interesting that we saw, even though our cases are going up, and when we're looking at these dates, and it was just the latest dates that we have, this is our percent of positivity rate. So, you know, initially, we, when this virus first started, our positivity rate wasn't that high in comparison, but we definitely had a big jump in COVID cases. And although our testing increased, our positivity rate has also increased. And it has increased rather significantly in June and in July, but over the past, you know, two-week period, it has gone down a tiny bit. Now, I think what's also important to understand is, we hear the term spike, we look at numbers that jump up and down, but when we're looking at trends, we need to see a continuous pattern, whether it's typically, we want to look at the incubation period of a virus. So with COVID, we want to monitor at least for two weeks, since the incubation period is up to 14 days. You know, more times than not, we like to double that incubation period and look at over 30 days. Now, this slide is an interesting one, so. Lot is going on with this slide, but let me try to break it down for you. So there's, when the virus first started, there wasn't a lot of testing going on, so there weren't a lot of cases that were going on. That's number one. Number two, with testing, there has been a delay in lab reporting, and this is in the state of Florida and also across the entire country. So one thing that's important to understand is, when cases come back to us, because by law, all providers are required in the state of Florida to report negative and positive cases to their local county health department. Now, I can get tested today, but sometimes because of a delay of a lab result, it might take anywhere from five to 10 days to get that result back. So when you have a lot of people that are getting tested at one particular time, and it's going to a different commercial lab, and, you know, I'll just say LabCorp, for instance, or Quest, because those are two common labs that people have heard of, if there are delays with those commercial labs that are not in Florida primarily, who are resulting back to their local county health department, it can take a very long time to get results. So on one particular day, we might receive 100 cases back, and somebody would say, wow, what happened? There's 100 cases in St. Lucie County, which is an accurate statement. But what's important for us to understand is, when did people become sick? So those cases are reported to us, and they are daily counts. But what we do in our disease program, in our epidemiology program, I know the term contact tracing is somewhat of a popular buzzword these times, but for decades and decades, that's what we do in public health. We investigate diseases, and based upon the investigation, what we learn from a positive case, that that would lead us to, okay, here's this individual who is positive. Some of the questions that we might ask are, when did you become sick? And when they became sick, that is what the bottom is looking at, when you look at the month, date of COVID-19 onset. So from our perspective, it's important for us to know, when is the disease circulating in St. Lucie County? So yeah, total cases, but from a disease perspective, again, we need to know when that individual became sick. So you can see, over the past month and a half, that there has been a pretty huge jump in the onset of cases. So long explanation, but I hope it kind of makes some sense as far as, yes, we get a lot of cases, but from a disease perspective, we need to know when the disease is circulating in the community. Now, a couple other metrics that we look at are surge capability. I mentioned speak to the hospitals on a daily basis to find out what their capacity is in-house to manage patients. They're doing, you know, they're at a level right now where their hospitals are definitely filling up. You know, it's been announced at HCA statewide as of Monday, yesterday, that they canceled all elective surgeries, which is a big deal, but that's something that they did. Speaking to Cleveland Clinic yesterday, and Rob Lord, you know, they're not at that stage right now. Now, cases are, they're able to manage, but if the trends continue in those directions, then it could be somewhat worrisome from a community standpoint, which is why they implemented some of the protective measures that they have. But they are able to treat all patients that are coming in, and from a community perspective, where we get involved in it, the Health Department is, from an emergency management perspective, we are also the lead for health and medical in the community. So one area that we would also get involved in is, if we need to open up any type of treatment sites in the community, that also would fall under our jurisdiction as ESF-8 lead. So we work very closely, is the title, or the comment says, with hospitals, emergency management, health department, to look at surge capability, whether it's inside a fixed facility like a hospital, or if it's something we need to do outside. Now, the other area that we also look at is a robust testing program. And I know there are a lot of providers in the community that are testing. There's a lot of urgent care centers that are testing. Hospitals have been testing, Florida Community Health Center, you know, Dr. Lewis, I speak to her often, that she has been increasing her capacity to test off of Delaware, and she's also looking at Port St. Lucie. And then there are also other federal testing sites that do pop up. I know there's one right now, Publics Verona. There's a few others that kind of come up and go. So testing is available. It's evident that we can see daily, again, how many tests are coming into the county. Again, when we looked at this a handful of months ago, there were 100 to 200 tests per day. Now we're averaging anywhere from 600 to 800 tests per day. This is maybe one of the most interesting slides, so please focus on this. When we look at case counts, what is important to really understand is, you can look at the aggregate number, and I can tell you, because I got, I received an email earlier today, as of this morning, we have 3,135 cases in the county, 3,118 are residents of the county, 17 non-residents, and we have 64 deaths. What's important is to try to do an apples-to-apples comparison. When we look at St. Lucie County, we look at neighboring counties in the state of Florida, what we wanted to do is show a rate of how many people are, have been infected with the virus in St. Lucie County. So this data is as recent as we can get it, and it's actually, you can see, is published on July 13th. So St. Lucie County, we are below the state average as far as how many cases we have per 1,000 population. Almost twice as less as our, as Martin County. Palm Beach, a lot more than we have from a rate, even Okeechobee. And Indian River is slightly lower than us, but again, you know, we are dramatically lower from a rate perspective than the state of Florida. Next is pediatric cases. What we are also interested in with children, being that I have two children as well, who are in St. Lucie Public Schools, of course, it's a concern, but I know I'm definitely looking forward to school. I, you know, when we look at total cases, between March 20th and July 7th, that approximately 11% of all COVID cases in the county are of children 19 years and younger. Now, we also look at from a hospital perspective, because we want to also take a look, that's why I was just peeking at my phone, because I had a couple texts. I'm just curious, from a hospital perspective, how many children have been hospitalized? And, you know, to date, St. Lucie Medical Center, zero, and Longwood, 10 children. And I can tell you also with Longwood, that because of the expertise that they have as a trauma center, they also are receiving cases from all around the state, because it's some of the different procedures that they're able to do with their physicians. So out of those 10, I'm not sure how many are residents of this county. But, you know, overall, it is a small number in comparison to how many cases that we have had. Now, here's a video, and I might need to have, maybe I won't need help. This is a video from the CDC director. It's a short video, but I think it's pretty impactful.
CDC encourages all schools, all schools, to do what they need to reopen. The guidance that we've put out, as the secretary mentioned, is guidance, and I want people to see it as guidance to reopen. And nothing would cause me greater sadness than see any school district or school use our guidance as a reason not to reopen. CDC never recommended general school closure throughout this pandemic. We see schools, as has already been mentioned, as a vital part of our society, is that we have to stay focused on protecting the vulnerable. Those individuals that have multiple medical conditions, those individuals that are elderly with multiple medical conditions, as I mentioned, our household studies, the role that children play in the transmission cycle. For example, in our household studies so far, there was limited implications that the virus was brought into the household by a child. I think when we looked at individuals under the age of 45, they represent 2.4% of all the deaths in this country. When you look at them, those individuals under 45 frequently had a significant comorbidity, you know, significant obesity, diabetes type 1. So this virus does seem to be very limited pathogenicity for children. But I do think getting ahead of the curve, that you're talking about how you're going to handle cases of COVID in the school when you diagnose them, so that doesn't become some type of, you know, nine o'clock at night phone call tree that goes through the community, and the next thing you know, you have the school shut down for, you know, a week, rather than everyone being on board, how we're going to handle this. I think that's really important. From a risk versus risk point of view, that we need to reopen our schools, and we need to plan to keep our schools reopened. I think this really is the important message, and this is why we're having these discussions, to get people to understand that we need to reopen the schools, we can do this safely, we need to commit to it, and we need just to get it done.
That interview was last week. So reopening schools, and I just want to highlight a few of them. And I think we all understand, especially you guys in your roles, and, you know, the importance of kids being in school, from a, you know, say for parents, receiving, obviously, we know free lunch and breakfast, a safe haven, you know, educational regression, it has happened, and social interactions, it's important, it's helpful. So those are a few different areas. Now, with the CDC, they have provided, and I know that Mr. Jen and his staff, and I'm sure you too, you guys are also intimately aware of all the guidance that is provided. And now, the CDC, they are the experts, they are the national experts, and they have provided a plethora of guides and recommendations in all sorts of areas. You know, pick and choose what works best at a local facility, at a local school district. You know, I have had these types of conversations with, you know, our chief judge, with Children's Services Council, with the Chamber of Commerce, with other local governments, with a handful of different businesses throughout the community, as far as, you know, Clint, what should we do, or Health Department, can you help us? And, you know, we always refer back to the CDC, they are the experts, and we look and see what is applicable for your situation, and we work with that agency to try to help them figure out how and best you can open safely. So there's also some guidance with the Department of Education. So last week, when the decision from Department of Education and their executive order, when it came out, you know, this is, you know, an order that came out last week as far as opening schools, and, you know, from a Health Department perspective, what I've shared, you know, my counterparts across the entire state, and I know that there's maybe been some other conversations that happened as well, but, you know, from a perspective of a local county health department, we are here, we provide resources, guidance, and any type of assistance that we can to help that local school district. Now, from a public health nursing perspective, I've mentioned, and you guys are also intimately aware, that our nurses are in your schools daily, and they work well. And I'm hopeful after yesterday's presentation, the board accounting commissioners will be able to hire a few more nurses, and also the assistance of Children's Services Council, that they also agree to fund a few more nurses, which we're very grateful for. So we will work with schools to make sure that they do have adequate supplies and personal protective equipment. You know, we'll work through our emergency management chains, as we have been with every other agency that applied and is able to receive supplies and that type of thing through emergency management. From a clinic perspective, and I know I spoke to Mr. Tomlinson briefly earlier today, but I know daily, he speaks to Trish Goulet, who's our nursing school manager, and Angela Robertson, our nursing director, both of them are here today also, in case there's questions after that I can't answer. They're our experts with schools. There's a lot of different areas where we would get involved in, and I know that you have in front of you as well, but, you know, there's, again, several different ways that we know it would be challenging to have school open, but again, if it can be done in a manner that is safe, and we'll talk about that shortly. Now, here is a flow chart that we developed, and if you can pay attention, because I know that this is one also that I might need them to correct me on after, but if we do know of a positive case or somebody with a known contact, what we would do as part of our case investigation, and whether it happens in a school, childcare facility, or in an accounting firm right down the street, the process really doesn't change too much. But here, we focus on a child. So if a child has been homesick for two days prior to the onset of symptom, then you can see that no impact of the classroom. Student would isolate at home for the appropriate amount of time, so there'd be no impact. And that's important to understand. When we, again, when we are looking at positive cases, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We need to really investigate, we need to learn when the child was sick, where they were, who they were in contact with, and/or parents, and/or employees. So that's part of what we're looking for, but specifically with this flow chart, we are looking at children. So if a child has been in a classroom, then you can see, the next step would be other students and faculty in the classroom are close contacts. They would have to quarantine for 14 days from last contact, which would be the last day in class. And then during that time period, we would monitor for symptoms. And if there's no symptoms, return back to class. If there are symptoms, then the clock might start again. So it just depends upon what happens, if it does happen, from a positive case. And, I mean, if there's questions afterwards, we can take a look, and they can probably walk through it a little bit better than I did. So my last slide, and I put this, if St. Lucie Public Schools is able to follow the CDC and DOH guidelines, then they should be able to open up schools safely. And that is my presentation. If there's any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We really appreciate it. What is the percent cutoff that we would have to reach in St. Lucie County before the Health Department would step in and change our plan, as what happened in Palm Beach County, where the Health Department stepped in and superseded what the governor's order was?
So the Health Department did not specifically outright and say, we are not going to, we do not recommend or not recommend. I know that there was a health coalition that had some recommendations and stepped in. I can't answer that, you know, from a Health Department perspective. I mean, I can tell you that, I don't know if there's really a trigger as far as a total number, but if I can go back to that one slide, when you look and compare us to Palm Beach County, it's not, you know, a great comparison in the fact that they have a lot more cases, over 50% more cases from a rate perspective than we do in this county. So I'm not sure what that number would be, if that helps.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have another question. You mentioned about the testing, and I think that the testing has caused so much anxiety. I personally experienced this with some of my own staff, that they would wait four days to be tested, and then wait four days to get the test back, and so forth. I wanted to ask you, would it be the possibility, from the Health Department's perspective, of doing the, where they prick the finger and have immediate results with the slide to check and see if the antibodies are present? Would that be something we could have in every school, or have a mobile ability? Because I think if, I mean, we've got to get the testing, the testing is not acceptable to me personally, where it is now, because if people have been exposed, and then they have to deal with anxiety for a week mentally, you know, you start to, when you look at the symptoms of COVID-19, it's everything in the book. So I think the anxiety piece, if we could find a way to work on the testing, would that be a plausible way to do the immediate test with the prick of the finger and check the blood?
So I'm not sure if that would be the best solution, but it is a great question. And speaking to, a couple days ago, Mr. Adam Fetterman, and I know that he has reached out to a company, and I know he also spoke to Mr. Jen, and... out to a company, and I know he also spoke to Mr. Gent and myself, and we're also going to probably look at a couple other agencies to come up with a solution. And when I spoke to Adam, I was very selective as far as when we want to put our brand name behind testing with the group from a Department of Health standpoint. There's a lot to testing, you know, from a perspective, and I'm going to answer your question, but just to give you a visual, when you have drive-through testing and we can process people really quickly in some of those cases, and it's a good experience for the individual who goes through that process, hopefully it's a good experience. To do the testing, it does take a lot of staff. It does take a lot of preparation and planning. It takes a lot of personal protective equipment. There's a lot of backside of laboratory information that you need to process and send and push out. So when I spoke to Adam, and we are looking at it, we know we need a solution. I said, if we're going to get involved with it, I said, we definitely need to have Mr. Gent and his staff available also on it, because schools open, we need to have a better solution than what we currently have out there. So I'm hopeful to have a better answer for you once we have this conference call with the group. Now, as far as a blood prick or antibody testing, that's a limited resource. There's only a handful of locations, I think, that are doing that. And with antibodies, it can take anywhere from one week to one month to actually producing your body. And what we would, and that would tell you whether or not you have had COVID before, and depending upon what type of test, we're not sure if it's going to be COVID-19 or a different strain of COVID virus, because there are a handful of other COVID viruses circulating around. So it, I mean, you need special equipment, special reagents when you are testing for COVID-19. It is something that we are actually looking to have a quicker turnaround time with testing. So as far as every school, I don't know how feasible that would be, but we know from our perspective that we do need to have a better way that we could have turnaround times a lot quicker from a community standpoint.
Dr. Mills?
Thank you so much, Clint, for coming and giving us your report. We know that there is, we need to be under positivity rate to, in order to go just from step one to step two as far as the government, what has been put out with CDC recommendations. What is our positivity rate here in St. Lucy County? It really concerns me that Martin County and Palm Beach is right next door, the next-door counties. And also what has concerned me is that the number of cases have really gone up quite a bit within the last couple of weeks here in St. Lucy County. My take on it is that we need to get it under control before we just open up school. And when I say that, I'm talking about as far as going to the brick and mortar type education. All of us want our kids back in school.
Right.
I, as a grandparent, had to help with my three in the virtual program, and I want them back in school. And we have an excellent virtual program that our administration has put in place, in that I am thinking, we need to get this viral under control, at least to a point where it is going to definitely be safe. Because over the summer, there have been people that have gotten the virus that work with children, not to say children have given it to them, but there's also been some cases as well with children bringing it into programs. So my first thing is safety for all. And last week, I mentioned I probably should have been a medical doctor, because that is utmost important before anything else is their physical safety right now with the viral. So I have a question in regards to how many did you say is here in St. Lucy County cases? And what is the current positivity rate?
So our overall number as of this morning were 3,135 cases, 3,118 are residents of the county, and 17 non-residents.
Yes, sir.
Our latest numbers as of last week, year-to-date positivity rate is 8.61%.
Now, go ahead.
So I know with the World Health Organization, when they were looking at, and they are the worldwide leaders in infectious disease, when they're looking at anywhere from 3% to 12% range for positivity rate. Now, I know part of the other question was our neighboring counties. I know Martin County was around 12%. I'm not sure what Indian River County percent is, or Palm Beach or Okeechobee.
And in the last few weeks, have you seen that positivity rate go up or down?
Oh, over the past six weeks, it definitely has gone up. It trends that we have noticed as of the past few days, and we're doing rolling trends of every couple of weeks. So we have seen it go down slightly over what it has been the past six weeks, which it's good. You know, hopefully that trend continues, that it continues to go down.
Well, one thing that's been put in place that I believe is up to the utmost importance is that now it's mandatory masks in our county. I'm looking to see, and as I said last week, that we really work on this virus here in our county to protect our residents. And so it's good to hear that the county commissioners have voted for mandatory masks for all with certain exceptions, and I do appreciate that. So I'm hoping that that will help make our cases, you know, start to go down. But in the meantime, right now, they have been rising up. So it concerns me that we keep reopening things while the virus is basically out of control, you know. You know yourself that in Florida, the state of Florida, we had 15,000 cases in one day, just Sunday. So this really gets, I'm concerned, because I want everyone to be, I don't want any, I mean, we're going to have cases of death while we work on this, but I want us as a school district to be very protective of our teachers and our students while the virus is where it's at.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, and I agree with you. I think we all do with safety and health, and that's what we do in public health. And yes, it is wearing a mask. I know yesterday, Fisher was in executive order. I don't know if the way that it was, if it's a full order that the Accounting Commission voted on yet, but that being said, it is mask-wearing, it is social distancing, it is washing your hands, it is disinfecting. Everything together works. So it, you know, we as a community need to be more cognizant of it, and, you know, that's the best way that we can do to fight this virus. You know, from a state perspective, handful of weeks ago, because there was a huge uptick in central Florida with a couple of the bars, and I forget the names of them, that weren't as compliant, that the governor, he actually did back down and closed all bars. And I think there's a couple other things that were closed, but definitely bars were. So I'm not making a correlation to the uptick in numbers, but again, with the incubation period of the virus, it could be up to 14 days. I don't know how much of what was happening a few weeks ago is a reflection of what happened with the 15,000 number that came back on Sunday. But to your point, numbers have definitely been going up, and to your point, also protective actions are critical.
Are the researchers and the scientists, are they saying that we, a community should have 5% positivity rate or under to substantially in a community before we really consider the opening of schools? Is that's what's being said, or am I, do you know about that?
That I don't know, but that is something that we could definitely take a look at, the 5% number.
I know 10% is the maximum positivity rate. Is that correct, that we should have?
Through the World Health Organization, they're looking at 3% to 12%, that is, as long as you're in there. I mean, clearly the lower, the better that we look at.
Thank you, Clint.
You're welcome.
Clint, a question I've kind of wondered from the beginning. With all of these tests that are happening, are those unduplicated numbers, or are there folks that are getting two and three tests that are counted as, I mean, I can imagine that would be some of that.
That's a great question. As far as what the testing is, there are some deduplications that are going on. There are people who also have, because of the individual, and we'll look at a long-term care facility, if somebody is hospitalized, for example, and before they can return to a nursing home or assisted living facility or skilled nursing facility, they need to have two negative tests 24 hours apart. So one individual might get tested three, four, five, eight times until they meet that criteria. That being said, a positive case counts once. So that individual, if they're negative, then positive, then negative, then positive, and positive, it doesn't count as three or four positives. It's just one positive case for that individual. But there are multiple tests depending upon the individual and where they kind of fit and where their end home might be.
Thank you. I can imagine it would be troublesome to keep up with all of it and to find out whether any of them had been tested even in another state or something. I don't know that people would always be forthcoming about that.
Yeah, and that's also a really good point. I know that I had some sidebar conversations. What we have been seeing is a theme in this county and other counties, when we do our case investigations, that we're not always getting the best information when we call somebody and let them know, you know, you're positive, do you mind sharing with you where you work? And we're just not getting the compliance that is always best for us to do our job either. So that tends to be a challenge. And it's a theme. It's not just here in this county. I think it's a theme everywhere.
I would imagine so. Nationwide, I would imagine.
Yeah. But, you know, from our perspective in public health, we know that we need to find the virus. We need to isolate it. We need to contain it. And with that, we are in the process of hiring 34 more people to help out, and those 34 people are going to be broken up into a few different categories of nursing, disease investigators, which are contact tracers, health education, administration, because we know we need more assistance as well. So luckily with CARES funding, we were able to, from a Department of Health perspective, secure approximately $138 million, and every county Health Department identified what they are, what they feel they need to manage COVID in their community. And that's what we came up with, is 34 additional people.
Ms. Hilson?
I just have to say, I think that unfortunately, this has become a political issue and not a health issue. And it kind of reminds me, we went through the process with Get Real About AIDS, and we found that it was totally a health issue and it became a political issue. So we've dealt with that in the past. And, but because this has become a political issue, I think there's a lack of trust. I know there's a lack, I have a lack of trust. I have a son-in-law who's a high school teacher. I have a kindergarten child that starts kindergarten, or grandson that starts kindergarten this year, rather. What I would ask the Health Department to task an idea, and maybe you mentioned some people that are helping, Adam Fetterman, since we are the largest employer in St. Lucy County, if there could be a mobile unit that would work with our Health Department and go to our schools if there was a call for a teacher or a student to immediately go, because I am not at all satisfied with the testing. I think a lot of our problem is the testing and the tracking. And again, we talk about a lot of people going back to work at Walmart and fast food restaurants, but those people are not in a classroom eight hours a day with children. And I think it's a little bit different perspective. So I realize that it's a mandate by the governor, and they have threatened to withhold funding. And I understand that we're constitutional officers and we have to follow along as a school board, but it doesn't mean that we can't possibly work with you hand in hand and find a way to do more of an emergency-type thing. Because the testing, again, I mean, it's just pretty terrifying when people think they've been exposed and they have to wait a week or two before they even find out, and in the meantime, they're exposing other people. So if you would maybe go back to your team and say, maybe we could work with the school board to step in immediately when there is a case, because I think the school system is totally different from any other job anywhere. And we just have a whole different venue. Bus drivers with children on buses, teachers with children in a classroom, kids going through hallways to bathrooms. And I know that we're, Mr. Gent and his team, our staff has done an amazing job. But if you could work on the piece of the testing, it would give me a little more feeling of confidence, because right now, I think there's just too many questions, you know, in our community, not just our school system.
Okay. And if I could respond to that as well, and we definitely will look at a testing perspective to see how we can increase testing capacity as well as turnaround time, number one. Number two, I can also tell you that with our nursing, whenever we learn of any type of medical issue that happens in a school district, we jump on it extremely quickly. We have a history of doing that, whether it's meningitis, whether it was last year when we had the foodborne outbreak in one of the schools, and I forget, I think it was about 16 children that were transported to Longwood. You know, we're always going to be on top of it, so that I can assure you, working closely with Mr. Gent's staff, number one, or number two on that. In addition, and I know that Eric Goldman, the CEO of Longwood, is not here right now, but, you know, a conversation that him and I had had actually is yesterday, which is important to, you know, from an employer's standpoint, is cases of COVID that have happened with his employees, he mentioned that none have happened at work. So from a work perspective, it's important to provide your employees with the tools that they need. So, you know, that's very critical as well. And I'm not saying that that won't happen, because I know it will happen. But, you know, it's very telling when the medical group is working with sick people, and he's mentioned that they haven't had any exposure at work. You know, from a Health Department standpoint, we've been, since March 1st, every day has been a Monday for us. You know, our staff haven't stopped working since March 1st. And, you know, it's a commitment to them, you know, doing whatever we can to continue testing. We've been testing daily, you know, with Tricia and her group. We're doing daily testing for the community. And, you know, I can end with this, is I do agree with you, but I know I'm looking forward to my children going back to school.
Ms. Henderson?
Madam Chairman, I just got a few questions. Of the 64 deaths in St. Lucy County, what was the average age?
The average age for males, and this was the last that we looked at it, it was approximately 78 years old for a male and 82 for a female.
And the majority of their health, you said it was type 1 diabetes, obesity, or...
Well, without, I mean, we can't really discuss how somebody passed away, I mean, through Health Department and information that we can share. We can share the age, the gender, and the resident of the county that they passed away at. But as a general statement across the state of Florida, and which, you know, nationally, that most people who are of severe complications to COVID are individuals who are over 60 years of age and they have one or several comorbidities.
We talked about contract tracing.
Right.
How does that happen in schools? Let's say, you know, because we do have children rights and stuff like that, and I saw your flow chart. And I know we're getting in the weeds, Mr. Superintendent, but this is a question that I've been asked by tons of teachers. Let's say a student in my class, you know, has been exposed, and then what do we do? Do we hand you a bunch of students' names and say, go out at Health Department? You know, these are the questions that concern me and also the community.
Yeah, it's a good question. This is Angela Robertson, our nursing director, and I'll let her answer.
Good morning. So we have experience with this, with measles in the past and chicken pox. So this is a similar process that we would follow, where we would notify the school district, or the school district may be notifying us of the positive case first. So then we would work with you all to identify the contacts of that student or that faculty member. would work with you all to identify the contacts of that student or that faculty member. And then we would notify each one individually. And then we would say whether or not they need to quarantine for the 14 days, identify if they had symptoms or not, and then work individually with them from that point on.
My concern then is, because the school is so vast in its array, you have a homeroom teacher that's had contact with a student, and then he goes to PE, and then he goes to to everybody else. Where does the quarantine measure stop? Or does it not?
So we would follow what is identified as a close contact, which the CDC has outlined that. Anyone that is within six feet of another person for more than 20 minutes without without wearing a mask.
Okay, without wearing a mask.
The mask is not even like, it's it's a preventative measure, but we would still look at the six-foot measure for more than 20 minutes. So you could potentially have a student that has affected multiple classrooms, and that and that and potentially that entire classroom may need to be quarantined for 14 days.
I know this is a school district decision, or maybe it's not a school district decision anymore, but some of our classrooms, we can socialize within six feet, let's say PE or something. Are we requiring masks during those times? Or if they're socially, social distance, is a mask not required?
Right now, we're requiring masks for our students. We're still reviewing that. We know that the safest thing is for the for everybody is for them to wear in the mask. Now, if you have a very, very small classroom and socially distancing is possible, you know, then that would be a consideration. Also, just to follow up too, if we had a positive case in the school, in the school district, we would immediately notify the health department, follow their guidelines. We would also notify the parents from that school center of options available to them. You know, we would work closely with Clint and his department, but we would make parents aware, because I can take it to another level. You've got, you know, school bus transportation, you know, you've got at the secondary level multiple classes. And so you would, that's why with our with our three options, particularly the second option of the online, then if students had to go home for the 14 days, or even staff members, we could continue the instruction, or maybe a day or or two to to gear up for that. But we can continue that and monitor, you know, the the health aspect of it as well as continue the the academics.
And the employees are penalized for those days.
Correct.
So, basically, if something were happening inside of a classroom, then that teacher would go to an online sort of.
Yeah, we're we're in the process of negotiations right now. We'll be having an executive session with the board afterwards to to really get into the weeds on that and talk about some of those conversations.
Yes.
But those are the questions that that do come up.
Closing of schools. We 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 go back to school and we see a massive increase. Who makes that decision? And when is that decision made? Do we make that decision? Or is it a recommendation of the health department? You know, when, what are the parameters, I would say, of what what should we be looking for and what should our concerns be?
That would be a discussion that we would have to have, depending upon the circumstance of of the case. Is it a multiple outbreak or not? I don't know if it's a question that we can just easily answer without having specifics, because every case is can be a little bit different.
I've talked to you, Clint, privately a couple of weeks ago, when I had issues with testing. And I was, like Ms. Hilsen says, I'm rather concerned. My employee gets tested on Friday, and people don't work on Saturdays and Sundays, and you've got five days, and my employee's out till till Thursday or Friday, and I lost $10,000 to $15,000 worth of business. If that happens in the school district, the two areas, and I've talked to you privately about that, and I called my congressman and talked to the superintendent, if we don't do something about testing, some parts of our system will 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 decimate our district. And and I'm saying that publicly, because if we can't get kids to school, and we can't get them fed, and our employees have to be quarantined, this will be an intense issue.
Yeah. I mean, I can tell you, and I know with Ms. Hilsen, that we also spoke, that is something we'll look at through our chains. And, you know, what I would ask, and you also already mentioned, you spoke to your congressman, is, you know, through your chains, the Bureau of, you know, Department of Education, as much as you guys can also push this the same message that we're pushing through Department of Health. We know that testing capacity needs to increase, and it's something from a Department of Health standpoint, we're cognizantly aware of.
Yeah. And Mr. Superintendent, on the same guidelines, we need to make sure that that some of our employees know the importance of of social distancing. I know that sometimes when we get free at work and we want to sit around and talk, you do have to be careful. You know, we care for our individuals, but, you know, we just have to be careful how this this virus, you know, gets transferred to one another, particularly those that are older, yes, I'm getting older.
In regards to the community-based, like a testing site, and Mr. Spurver mentioned, Mr. Federman beginning a conversation, of which he and I spoke this last week, we're trying to set that meeting up either Thursday or Friday of this week. So that's, you know, and we're working with the county as well as other agencies within the community to see, because I know that that's a major, major issue. So we will, you know, we may know more. I also sent you all an email regarding that as well. So you'll you'll have that when you leave the meeting. And then, yeah, you know, we have the, it's like the students, we have the students in 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 school six or seven hours out of 24 hours. And we can, you know, and so what we've got to do is in really educate and continue, because I think sometimes people get, forget about it. You're washing your hands, you're wearing your mask, you're staying home when you're sick. We're not going to be pushing perfect attendance this year and those kinds of things. And so that's something that we have built into our curriculum with, you know, reinforcing that all the time. And and normally, normally teachers know more than the kids, because they're teaching that that aspect of it. So it it hits home harder. But that's something as well that we have to continue, you know, for all of society. But particularly in the school centers, we'll have the signage up, all of our schools will have the latest signage up, doing everything that we can, you know, to be as preventive as we can. We've been very deliberate in what we're doing as a school district. And 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 working, working with the community agencies and partners, recognizing as the board does, that the health safety is the number one priority of everyone. It's a unique time. We're going to do everything that we can to protect our folks. We're going to have information in a few moments after Clint's done regarding, you know, other surveys that parents have done and where that lines up as well, and then and the magnitude of that, and and where the general, where the parents are coming from in regards to this. I'm not sure if there's going to be more questions. The other deal is on the CARES Act itself. You know, we are going to be talking to the board regarding that and making a proposal. But part of that will be an additional additional health aides in our school centers to to assist with the with the clinic. So I know there's going to be additional nurses, but we have health aides and nurses in our schools. So that's something that we're going to be recommending, and where we would hire additional health aides to to support our school centers. And I'll leave it at that right now.
Madam Chairman, we've talked about the sheriff's office. I appreciate Sheriff Maskier and what he does for our community. And I know that there have been issues in the jail, not issues, but just an outbreak in the jail. And I know that the jail is sort of like, has like a flow and an ebb. During the summertime, it gets really high, because people want to get out of the sun, and they commit a crime, just go to jail sometimes. I'm serious. And then in the wintertime, they do the same thing. So right now, the jail is probably sitting at 1,400 roughly. Would you say 1,300, 1,400 inmates?
Yeah, a little bit lower. They.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay. So how many inmates have COVID or had COVID? And how many staff members have had it so far?
So with the jail, the highest as far, I I believe we're at 34 inmates and approximately four or five staff as of right now that had it. And, you know, luckily, the jail, through major CISO, that we've actually been working with them quite some time, as far as having a process to manage employees coming in, vendors coming in, and inmates. But to your point, it was 34 inmates at this time.
For over the three months?
Overall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's people coming in and out from the community.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Mills?
I read some statements recently that I just want to confirm. But before I ask you that question, a few questions about the statements that I read. When I think of the social, emotional aspect of a child, and how I keep hearing from different ones, the importance of them coming back to school, because, you know, we've got all type of households out there, and some of the children are suffering a lot more than others. But when I think about a day in the classroom with what, how they have to go back at this time, if we, that's, and that's what we voted that they do, you know, the parent has a choice, and if they choose option one, they go back into the classroom. But when you think about a day in the classroom, what teachers and what students are going to have to go through, to me, that's a big impact psychologically also on that child and on that teacher, in that they can't touch each other, you know, they have to be at least six feet apart, you know, even when they're having conversations, they have to wear the mask on most of the day, if there is not a possibility that they can be at least six feet apart from each other. There's a lot of psychological, emotional aspects that go into that for a child. And then if we have to shut back down after we've been open for so many days, that can really affect children as well. So I think it's kind of a balance either way. It's not like, I don't think being in the school system is going to make it easier on a child. I think it's going to be a real strain on both teacher and child. But with that being said, I did read recently some comments that were made regarding the virus in St. Lucie County. I just want you to confirm or non-confirm it to be true. Is there a surge in hospitalizations right now?
Yes.
Okay. Another question. What is the percent increase in cases, the percent increase in cases here in St. Lucie County?
From, is there a time? I mean, I I can tell you.
I'll say within the last 30 days, the last 20 days or 30 days.
Percent number, it increased dramatically from the previous 30 days. A particular percent, I don't have in off the top of my head or even.
Does 200% increase in cases, does that help? Is that true? Or you said you don't have it right now, but I thought maybe if I throw out the number.
I can mention, in the middle of June, we had half as many cases as we do a month later.
I read that, I read that within the last, I thought it says something about the last 20 something days. But it says that there's a 200 increase, percent increase in cases, and a 17, 72% increase in fatalities in the 27-day.
We'll research that and get your specifics on both.
Okay. I'd like to know that.
We'll get that information.
That tells me it's a lot of cases going, there's a lot of, a big increase in cases. And I I really look forward to seeing that go down in all of the different methods that we need to do to make that happen as a community. So, but I'm looking at, you know, we still have a month before school. I'm hoping that people will do what they need to do in our community, much less within our school system, to make sure that everybody is safe, as safe as humanly possible, while they are returning back, those parents. So we need to know that information, because I think a lot of people think, well, 3,000 is not much. I mean, depending on the one who's thinking about it. And yet, to me, 3,000 people in St. Lucie County is a huge number, from what I want to see in regards to what we're dealing with. I look at other countries right now and how they are doing so much better than the US. And it's sad, because the US could be doing very better. We, in fact, we have New York that have proven that, even though they had such a, you know, New York at their peak was 14,000 cases in one day. We just passed that in in Florida as of Saturday with 15,000 cases. So I know we can do better as a community, even though we may not be able to go and do what we need to do in Broward County or Martin County. But here in St. Lucie County, we should be able to keep our numbers very low, just doing what we others have done to keep theirs low, you know?
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, we've we've always proven in this county that we can be examples for the rest of the state, so why not start?
The serves in hospitalization, was that because of COVID or because elective surgeries have gone up?
Both.
So you're saying that folks that might go in for elective surgery would be identified as asymptomatic and and COVID carriers, and so it becomes another case?
So at the hospitals, where they, prior to an elective surgery, they will test whether or not somebody is positive. Sometimes it will delay the procedure, sometimes they'll still do it, depending upon what the procedure is.
Over the last 14 days, I've read, we have seen 13 days of higher positive testing rates than desire, than the desired maximum level of 10.
That's probably an accurate statement.
Any other questions for Mr. Spurver, Ms. Hilsen?
I've kind of closed this up of this, as you know. I've listened to Mr. Spurver several times. My advice has always been to look to your local officials for best direction and not worry so much about the state and not the federal. And when we look at what the chancellor said Friday, the chancellor gave us very little leeway, except when it comes to what Mr. Spurver gives us direction on. But Ms. Hilsen referred to is that potentially going against an executive order, especially at a time of crisis, it has become a political hot potato. The state's not giving us much direction as far as being helpful. But they did Friday pretty much say, basically, your health department's in control. So until your health department makes a decision that's other than what the state says we should be doing, we have no leeway to do anything different. So to that end, some of the organizations, Mr. Spurver, we're working closely with Children's Services Council and anybody that'll listen to him. We have been able to, as you know, create a collaborative of organizations that are willing to pool their money to a significant degree in order to be of assistance to the issues that Mr. Spurver and his team decide need to be addressed in this community. There are Allegheny, the Community Foundation, Children's Services Council, there's a bunch of, actually, some private funders in there, too. So the issues that have come up are real, and they're a concern. But there is a group of people in this community that's willing to work with the health department to make a very negative situation as as palatable as possible in a difficult time. So we are looking to Mr. Spurver and his team, because his team is, well, I know, I know a lot of his team. So they are really experts, and they're experts beyond our county. They are actually experts within our region, if not beyond. So there's some extra money for school nurses next year, not enough, of course. But there is a willingness for the community to try to pull together to do what we need to do to make sure that we can mitigate the negatives and continue to work on the positives that this community is known for. So I know the political lay of the land is very unfortunate. There was a disagreement, I would say, significant disagreement with the chancellor last week on some issues. However, the executive order will not be mitigated. And he did, I would say, put much, all the onus on a lot of decisions on the health department or a team of medical experts. And but it has to, the ruling has to either come from, I think he said, your community safety officer or your department of health. And but I know that you're working with our community safety officer, you're working with Mr. Parrish all the time. So, but that's kind of the lay of the land of where we are. We have very little recourse, except to do the best we can. We have some issues on some devices and different things that they recommend, the chancellor's office recommended. He did say, basically, that we would have to pay for everything, and we might get reimbursed up to 85%, depending on the situation. They couldn't give us a great advice on what those devices should be for deep pleading in that, although I know Clint, you know all that stuff about what they should be, and working with our team here to make sure that happens. But it's a, it's not, it's not a positive scenario, and we are not getting any good guidance outside of our area. and we are not getting any good guidance, uh, outside of our area. It is once again, I would say, a stick and not a carrot. Uh, come up with a plan, Monroe County had a plan, they denied it. Uh, and the, uh, upshot of that is you can go ahead with the plan, but we're going to take your money. And so it's gonna, it's a, a very interesting thing because they're actually going to change the matrix of how we get reimbursed, how we get FTE dollars, and all that impacts the community as a whole, depending on what we're able to do. But I would say that with, uh, Clint going, taking the forefront and working with all the people in our community, our community is known for taking a really tough problem and making it work as best we can. And I, uh, anticipate that, uh, that will happen here. It's not going to be a good scenario, there is no good scenario. Uh, we just have to do the best we can and we have to take direction from the experts.
If I can comment on that, and I appreciate that, that feedback, I honestly do. Um, but we are not the policymakers or decision makers. We provide the data, we provide the guidelines, we provide the support. Now, whether it's with the school district or any of the other agencies, decisions to open or not open are not made locally with the health department.
I appreciate you saying that because I think a lot of this is a bullying tactic to, to get us to do exactly what they want in regards to, uh, the governor and, um, our federal, uh, folks. And I think, I don't think they can really do it without having other votes and other people get involved to say, we're going to take away your school, you know, you're going to take away your money or whatever they might, the threats might come. It takes more than just one person, uh, threatening you, even if he is the president of the United States. So I appreciate that, it's in regards to you saying the health department just gives the facts. You know, um, it's not like you have the authority. I don't, uh, you know, to, you know, now you can give the facts and you can give your suggestions in regards to, you know, if you, if you, you can say to us, because of what's going on in our community, we need not to, you know, open schools. You can say that as your, as far as your opinion, but if, as far as you making the decision as a health department, I don't think so.
My recommendation is, you know, the, the comment that I have up here is, you know, as long as the guidelines are followed, that, you know, based on the facts that I provided here and will continue to provide up into school and even after we've been doing it, you know, providing weekly updates that go to several of, um, your staff, Mr. Jen and others. I'm not sure what is pushed also to you, but we do situation reports every Friday. We have done eighteen of them so far that gives a nice visual as far as how the virus is circulating in the community. Again, it, it's facts for policymakers and different executives so that they can manage their own operations. And, you know, that's what we do. I, I don't give an opinion to, you know, what other entities should or should not do. You know, we'll, we'll get involved when there are cases and outbreaks. And then, you know, our public health opinion and decisions will get more, um, you know, authoritative in those types of things, whether it's a tuberculosis outbreak or, you know, a, a contagion disease. Then that's when we, we get a little bit more involved. But from a day-to-day business, we do not, that's not our role.
Clint, just to, to clarify, because we did get quite a few emails trying to clarify Palm Beach County. And it was the opinion of Palm Beach County's Health Department that they were in a dangerous percentage of COVID-nineteen cases. And they gave that information to the school board, which then made an educated decision based on the health of Palm Beach County, which is a massive county. And they, they're, they are in a very dangerous situation per capita. And so are, are you saying that the Palm Beach County Health Department did not do that? Because that was my understanding, that they gave the educated opinion, it was unsafe for school to open.
I would have to follow up with Dr. Lonzo, my counterpart there. I'm not familiar with that conversation.
Okay. Because I think what has happened is right down from the presidency to the governor, everybody's passing the buck, basically, because nobody wants to be responsible. And I'm not talking about you and the health department, you've done an amazing job. But the responsibility, I mean, I just want it clarified that when the governor passes an edict and we fail to follow it, there will be funding withheld. And they have the spirit and the decisions to, and I've seen it done before for different circumstances. So I just want to be sure that we as a school board are following what we should do from a health perspective, what we feel is correct, along with, of course, the mandate from the governor's office, which we didn't really get a lot of wiggle room there. But the last thing I do want to say is if our numbers do go up, and I think everybody's touched on that, we want to know as a school board that the health department steps in and says, your numbers have gone up, we need to reconsider. Because we want that, you know, assurance that you're going to follow along with this and be our partner in that process. If it does get to the point where there are outbreaks and it's no longer safe to be open brick and mortar.
From a hypothetical standpoint, um, possibly. I, I mean, I can tell you, we'll continue to share information right now and up until the point of COVID is no longer an issue in the community. And we work very closely with your staff and will continue to share, um, information with them and, and have discussions as far as, you know, what the virus looks like and who it's impacting. And, I mean, again, I do want to go back to that one slide where this is from the beginning of the virus, where there has not been, um, many impacts in children also. But to your point, we will always share information. We are here, we're partners, we all live here. Yes, we are a state agency, I've lived here, have lived here for the past seventeen-plus years. And I want the best for our community. You know, I want it to be a safe community and live right down the road. And, um, you know, we're, we're all in this together. And, and I'm hopeful that, you know, from a community perspective, we, we continue to heed the advice that has started from March first, when Howard Tipton and I and a couple others had our first press conference. And, you know, let, let's follow the advice of the CDC and the public health experts as far as how to manage the virus in St. Lucie County. And, you know, Ms. Hensley mentioned, um, also that, you know, we have a history of working very well with one another, whether it's school district, public safety, or any other entity, um, from a community perspective. And that's what we need to continue to do and push, push information out in education. And, you know, now with Ms. Lydia Martin as a public information officer, and I speak to her fairly often as well to, you know, as a joint partnership, where we'll continue to push information out to the parents and the teachers as far as what the latest advice is and recommendations, um, from a public health perspective as far as being safe in the community. I mean, that needs to continue and will continue, I have no reason to think it wouldn't.
Clint, I want to thank you for being here and thank you for your team. Mr. Jen, thank you for your team. But the buck actually stops with us school board members. We were elected to represent our community. Um, we can say, you know, we can take your advice, but, but the reality of it is, it's us. Um, I'm not going to shirk my responsibility. It is drawing us all, it is all four of us that have to make this decision. That being said, we have to follow our community and see what the needs and wants and desires of our community are too. And we just took a survey that says eighty percent of our community want their children back at brick and mortar schools. So we can say no, yes, or no, but we're going to have to plan for that. And we're going to hopefully discuss that in a few minutes because that's what our community wants.
Did you say eighty percent of the community or eighty percent of the parents?
Eighty percent of the, of the children are going to attend school.
Is that from the parents though? Because you said community.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about the, the children of St. Lucie County. I, I, I'm not talking about community, I, I guess you're right. People that have children in our school district, eighty percent of them will be here. So we have to start planning on that. Now, that day comes August the tenth and, you know, we may see a dramatic increase and we may have to make some changes then. But at this point, we have to go forward in what we've decided, with the recommendation of you, but it's our, our, our decision. It's been clearly stated numerous times. What I like about Mr. Clint is he's saying one thing, but he's also doing something too. His kids are going to be in public school, I appreciate that. Because actions is almost as much as saying your words. So he's trusting us to, to, to watch over his children, just like the community is. We have to make sure that our, and just like the superintendent has said numerous times over, we have to protect ourselves and we have to protect the children by using the guidelines that have been set forth by us. And we have to do it to the best of our abilities. We're not going to be perfect. We have to do our best though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, Clint, being here and your staff. Appreciate the partnership. It's not good times for anyone, certainly, but thank you for sharing those today.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Clint.
Mr. Superintendent, do we have other issues under the same order of business?
Yeah, I, I wanted to, um, for, um, Jonathan Ferguson just to come up because we, we get questions about legality and I know it's come up with the board as well. So, um, we've got him, we've also got Mr. Harrell here. So he can make some brief comments. And then after that, um, I'd like for Dr. Prince will come up. And, and since we've talked about the survey, I think it would be appropriate right now too. So he could lay out, because there's questions regarding that in people's minds. So before we go there, let me go ahead with, with, with Jonathan, Mr. Ferguson, Dr. Ferguson, and then we'll, we'll move on to the next phase.
Good morning, Chair Holly, board members. Mr. Superintendent, the superintendent asked me to give very brief overview of, for the audience benefit, of what the board's authority to do and not do is, uh, under the law in Florida. Florida is subject to a multi-tiered level of governance of its public schools. It starts at the state legislature level, where they set the broad policy and then they establish the parameters of which the local school boards then need to operate. So the local school boards then set local policy consistent with state law. And then the superintendent is responsible for implementing the local school board policy, also consistent with state law. What happens is sometimes folks will look at the state law and they'll take it out of context with what your authority to do and not do is. So for example, there's a law that says, except as otherwise provided by law, all public schools conducted within the district shall be under the direction and control of the district school board with the district school superintendent as executive officer. Out of context and by itself, that seems to be very broad authority for the school board to do whatever it wants to do. But the important part is that very first section that says, except as otherwise provided by law. And that's where the constraints imposed by the legislature are put on the school board and you must operate within those constraints. So now we are operating within very special times. The state is under a declared state of emergency, which gives the governor very broad powers to either waive law or to modify law. And that is now exhibited by the executive order that he issued, um, which says that the school boards must make a brick and mortar option available to all parents five days a week. So the, the, the school board at this point in time must submit a reopening plan to the state that then has to be approved. And that reopening plan must include a brick and mortar option for every parent. You have no choice. You have no authority to deviate from those guidelines. How you then implement it is where you have the little control that you have. And then what happens as you have outbreaks and how you deal with those, again, are left to the school board and the superintendent to implement. But the bottom line is unless you want to walk away from state funding, which is obviously not a realistic option, you must provide a reopening plan that includes a brick and mortar option five days a week. That's the bottom line. Until the executive order is modified or changed by the governor, you have no other option. We just wanted to make sure that the public and the audience understood the limits of what you can and cannot do. And that's a very critical, uh, element going forward.
Dr. Mills?
Now you said we have to make, we have to include that as an option. Does that have to be option one rather than option two? Which, you know, like if somebody defaults and does not pick an option, they go into option one. That's where I'm coming from. So does that mandate say that it has to be the first option?
Dr. Mills, that's an excellent question. Those are the details that would be left to the school board to determine as to how they wanted to implement that. Again, the, the executive order is very broad and does not contain any of the details. It simply says you have to include a brick and mortar option. Uh, how that then gets implemented is up to the school board based on the direction of superintendent and staff.
If I, if I could, um, and based on conversations with the chancellor and, um, and superintendents that we've had, we have to submit a plan and it's due, I believe, um, the thirtieth of the month. And the plan has to be approved by them. So in the questioning and the Q and A regarding that, um, it's been made real clear that the five-day brick and mortar must be an option. That's been made very, very clear. I'm aware of districts that have tried to do other options, um, and were, you know, weren't successful within that. So based upon the information that I have, that must be an option that we offer to our, to our parents based upon what the executive order has said and the language and the communications that I hear.
Superintendent, I do understand what, what he, you just repeated what he said, I understand that. That it has to be an option, that wasn't my question. My question was, does it have to be the first option? And that's what I wanted an answer to.
Brick and mortar, five days a week. Whatever order you put it in, it has to be an option for the, for the community.
I got what you said.
Yeah.
And Dr. Mills, if I may clarify, while the presentation on the reopening plan that was made to the board listed options one, two, and three, those aren't in rank importance. They are simply numerical options. They could have been in any order possible, it's just, those are the three options. So I, I, I understand where you, where you were going with your question.
I have a few questions about option two that the community's asked me about. If you start on option two and you want to go back to option one, how does that work out? Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's a very nimble plan and flexible. What we're, so you would have the opportunity to go from one to the other in either, in either direction. You could go from school to home, you could go from home to school. We're trying to lay it out during nine-week periods of times. However, we will take each case individually and see what the circumstances are to work directly with their parents to what really works best with them. The third option, the Florida virtual, it's, it's different, it's not the same. These two are the same scope and sequence. So if the teacher's teaching online all day, they're going to be in the general, um, during that week, generally close to where they are in other schools, whether it's in school or at home. So it's an easy pivot to, to do either one. The, the Florida virtual or the, um, Mosaic is different because they follow a different scope and sequence. And it, and it's a, it's a, it's, it's just a different curriculum. That's why we ask for that year-long commitment for that group. Hope that, that answered it?
Yes, sir.
I, I want one point of clarification because, um, Mr. Ferguson does represent the school district, whereas we have Mr. Harrell who represents the school board. And it is my understanding that the two of you have been in close conversations together so that what encompasses the board also encompasses the district's, um, direction.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, I have discussed the matter and, uh, concur with Mr. Ferguson's analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam, uh, Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to bring up Dr. Prince, our, our deputy superintendent. We did do a parent, this is a parent survey, uh, to the, to the children whose parents are in our, in our district. And so I want to make sure that, uh, our audience here and at home, and we did, uh, you know, notify everybody, like I said, mentioned before, uh, because I know there's been questions on this. And, and how do you know, um, that if someone doesn't select number one and that they're automatically put in there? one and that they're automatically put in there, how do you, how do you know, how do you break down the percentages? So I'd like for, uh, you, you should have the hard copy in front of you. Now this is, we received, um, 4,000, approximately over 4,000 last night, so this is not the latest greatest. It'll be updated each day. We just didn't have any, enough time this morning, uh, to do that. It's by school as well. So, Dr. Prince?
Okay, so, uh, let me just kind of explain the process to the board of what we've gone through with getting information and feedback from our parents. We sent out a survey, you know, almost, uh, three to four weeks ago with regards to our parents and what our parents wanted. And the majority of our parents wanted to return to school. That was shared with the board a few weeks ago at the last board meeting. But we, we still needed to come up with a way for our parents to opt into the My School option or the Mosaic option. So let me just explain what you're looking at. Uh, up on the screen, you also have, uh, in your slide package or the presentation that Clint did, if you turn that to the very back, you're going to see what is projected, so I can kind of go through it and, and share with you, um, how that worked. So yesterday, the superintendent went on the, the news and was answering some questions and indicated that 24,000 responses had been made with regards to, um, the outreach that we've done with our parents. So what we've done is we've sent out, uh, uh, voice, uh, voice phone calls, we've done emails, we've been, um, pushing it through social media with regards to parents to go onto our website and make a choice on a commitment form, okay? So the experiment worked because, as you know, I have two children in our public schools and my wife received an email and a phone call because she's a parent, just like I am, just like I did. And she went on to our website, pulled up the, uh, the directions and in the first bit of directions, it says very clearly, you don't have to go any further if you are choosing to stay in traditional schools. So you stop right there. If you are choosing to go to My School, there's a, a brief synopsis of what that entails, or if you choose to go into Mosaic, you have to complete this commitment form. Now, based on those, uh, phone calls and emails, we had, as of yesterday, with the superintendent shared, 24,000 people went in to go, uh, access the directions through our website, just like my wife did, okay? So we're choosing to elect traditional public schools for our two children, so she stopped there. She no longer had to go any further, okay? So she didn't have to complete the commitment form to choose either My School or choose, uh, Mosaic. So as of yesterday, we had 24,000 people open the directions. And you can see here that we had, uh, 15,144 opened the English version, 1,191 opened the Spanish version, I'm sorry, 22,000 opened the English version, 1,700 opened the Spanish version, and then 300 opened the Creole version. Now, at that point, if I want us to, uh, according to the directions in the first paragraph, if I'm opting for traditional, I don't have to do anything else. I don't have to complete a form. But for those selecting options two and three, they completed the form. We had, uh, 6,499 select option two in English, 488 selected, uh, completed the form in Spanish and 45 selected, uh, that were Haitian Creole selected the My School option. And then you can see the Mosaic there. What's interesting is approximately 18%, 18 to 19% of our students have selected either My School or Mosaic. Our survey results that we did three to four weeks ago is exactly that, about 19 to 20% of our parents, uh, choosing some sort of an online version of learning. So this goes along with what we expected and anticipated. Now I will say that parents are still continuing to open the instructions, uh, between the information the superintendent shared yesterday, 24,000. Yesterday, we had 6,000 additional people open that survey. But the percentage selecting the My School or Mosaic has been roughly unchanged. The parents, approximately 18 to 19% are going in and completing those forms. So I just wanted to make sure that the process was explained to you. You also have a spreadsheet in front of you and if you look on the far right, um, you can basically see the percentage of students, uh, enrolled in our schools that are, uh, selecting Mosaic or My School as an option. And then the principals will build their master schedules based on those final numbers that we have. I also want to remind you because a question has come up, what about students that are not in our system, that are new enrollees? Whenever they go to student assignment, they are guided into those, uh, choices that they can go, uh, online and, and complete a commitment form. For My School, they'll be enrolled at their school and they will, uh, participate online or they can choose the Mosaic option, or they can do nothing and they can be simply assigned, um, to attend brick and mortar five days a week at their regular schools. Okay? And as students go, the deadline for the commitment form is tomorrow, uh, by the end of the day on Wednesday. However, new enrollees to the district will still have options to go into My School, like the superintendent's very flexible. Also, parents can still change their mind. We've already had, uh, parents that completed the My Form to go into, you know, My School or Mosaic that have already contacted saying they want to change their mind, they want to go brick and mortar and vice versa. So we are allowing some, you know, our parents to pivot and change their mind as they get more information.
Madam Chair, if I could, we want our parents, um, and this is really important, and so this is being broadcast live right now and live streamed, we want them to take their time and be deliberate and look at all the options and look at the information. We want them to go to the webpage, um, um, Dr. Wild has a video on there that talks about the specifics of it as well. We have a Q and A that is now on the webpage and I, I don't know if we have a hard, did we give a hard copy to the board this morning of the Q and A? Okay, so we'll get that to you before you leave. And, um, so we want, and then there's also phone numbers on there. We encourage them to call their home school to ask any questions that they have. We're being very flexible, um, with our parents, but it's important that we're going to need to get this information, particularly at the secondary level when you have to do masters, master boards, that's a very, very complex process. So we want our parents, um, to, to, to be careful, to be deliberate, to ask questions, um, and we'll answer them and then to, uh, you know, either, you know, to make their choice or if we don't hear back, then we're, you know, then it's choice number one. And I, and I, um, just wanted to make sure, because when Dr. Prince, I know he didn't mean that, but when he said you can stop right there, you know, I want him to go all the way through, read everything and then, you know, discuss that and then, uh, make that, make a family decision or caregiver decision that's in the best interest of their children that they serve. Thank you.
Dr. Prince or, or either Superintendent Jen?
I have a question here. What does a day of virtual school look like as far as the child? What are they going to see on the, um, online? You know, are they going to see their, for example, are they going to see their teacher teaching a regular class? Will that teacher have the, what they need to, to actually, you know, the chalkboard and whatever else they need? Like a regular class day of being, if they, as if they were going to the mortar?
Mm-hmm. They'll have, they'll have their schedule and they'll follow their regular schedule. And it'll be a combination of live instruction and modules, um, but they will have their teacher there every day. I mean, and some of it will be, uh, recorded, some of it will be live, they'll be pivoting back and forth, working in small groups. But it's going to, it's going to have, uh, the closest representation we have to students going to school, which is really, you know, if I'm in a middle school or a high school, I'm going to be in period one, period two, period three, period four. If I'm elementary school, I'm going to have my literacy time, but teachers are going to have some flexibility to set that up because teachers still have to do small group, uh, instructions with small groups of students.
Okay, so they don't have, they don't have where they can ask a question just automatically as they're working through?
They'll have the ability to ask questions, absolutely.
Dr., um, if I could, let me bring Dr. Wild up on that.
Okay.
But it's, and I want to make this really clear, it's not going to look like it looked the last nine weeks.
Okay.
It's going to be, it's going to be rigorous. There's an expectation that they're going to come on every, every day, attendance will be taken every period. It will not be what the last nine weeks was. That's where we had to pivot and do, you know, we did an excellent job, our staff and our teachers did a remarkable job with that, but this, the training will be different. I'll let Dr. Wild maybe get in the weeds here for a second for, for the benefit of everyone.
Yes, good morning everyone and thank you, Dr. Mills. That is an excellent question and we are getting that question a lot. We are really making sure that our students are attending school every day, every class, regardless of which option they choose. And with option two, um, it is going to follow their schedule exactly like Dr. Prince said, and you're asking specifically what that looks like. So when a student logs on for, a high school student, for example, logs on for first period, they will log on at a specifics, at a specific time with live instruction with that teacher. Um, the resources for that day are the same as if that student was in regular school that day on a traditional schedule. Asking about a, a chalkboard or a blackboard or a whiteboard, those are built into the tools. So yes, the teacher can do an online lesson, um, in real time that is live and interact with those children. Um, and they can do that through Canvas or through Teams. Um, so we are using those two tools instead of any prepackaged canned curriculum so that they will have that daily interaction with their classroom teacher. And elementary looks a little bit different because they're with their teacher for most of the day, so they might be on and off. So Dr. Prince talked, talked about a little bit of, uh, blending approach when it comes to that. So the students might take some time to, um, take a break or do an assignment and during that time, the teacher might switch to working with a small group of students that need intervention from that teacher, need a small group lesson or additional support or tutoring, um, in any, any subject area, in, in elementary, for example. At the time when that student would normally go to their next teacher on a secondary schedule, they will literally be expected to be there by that next teacher. So when, this year, when we take attendance, we won't be using the flexibility that we used fourth quarter because we allowed students to work at any time that they could manage within their household. And that was primarily driven by, you know, number one, the quick turnaround and, and number two, the fact that our children were sharing computer devices. So in My School Online, the expectation is that every child enrolled will have their own device so that there is no barrier to interacting with that teacher at the time that they are expected to be in class. So we would say they're in class at that time.
So if you have five children in a, in a household, every last one of them will have the computer they need, the laptop they need to do their?
That is correct. And, and, you know, we would ask families, if you have two, two devices already for those five children, then, then please let us give you three more. So we will ask what you already have in your household, but yes, every student that enrolls will, will have a computer. This commitment form was by student name, ID number, grade level, and school. So we have that information.
So just like in the classroom, when a student has a question, they raise their hand, how will that be dealt with virtually?
It, it depends on what, what program the teacher is using at that particular lesson. If they're using Teams and their camera, they will see the student raise their hand, but there's also tools where a student can raise a flag to say, I have a question. There's written chats, it really depends. We also have a, a tool called Flipgrid that, um, our teachers, if they haven't already been trained, have the option to be trained if they want to have a lot more options for the students to turn and work, ask questions, interact with their, with their teacher.
Okay, I had another question that, that a parent brought to me. And I think we need to do more, more of the robo calls because I've had several parents say they didn't get a robo call. So, you know, um, I don't know if they're on the list or how we do that, but they said they didn't get one.
And please feel free to refer anyone that tells you that to us because we can tell if, um, it went to an answering machine or if somebody hung up, we actually have a record of that.
Okay.
And that's also why we're doing so much social media blitz and news coverage and trying to make sure that everyone hears about this.
Now, but if a student is in an accelerated class, you know, um, enrichment class last year and the parent wants them to stay in that class, so it could be, for example, uh, geometry.
Yes.
And they have honor geometry. Um, or dual enrollment or IB or whatever, how does that work with the virtual program?
We are matching their schedules. We are, um, we've built out the curriculum in all subject areas to be able to do that. We will have, um, school-based scheduling, just like a regular master schedule. There will be a few, um, more unique classes, the, the classes with lower enrollment that we might have to do some cross-school enrollment. We will be facilitating that with our school sites. So for example, AP Physics, there are not very many sections, there may not be enough students in one school, so we may have to blend some students from a school. We'll facilitate that process to make sure that we can meet the needs of, of our students. And we've, we had that conversation also with our bargaining partners and what that could look like. And some of our teachers will be teaching some sections online, some periods online and some periods face-to-face. There's many subject areas within our school where there's only one or two teachers. But because we're following the teacher and student schedule, that's very feasible and because we're not using two different sets of curriculum, it's consistent across those option one and option two.
Okay, well, we also have a tutorial site, tutorial, that's why I gotta take this off, tutorial, uh, virtually?
For the students that are in need of tutorials. We will be providing all wraparound services for our students, so they will still be eligible for, um, any ESE services, ELL services, um, small group instruction or tutorials, um, as well as counseling services.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Helen.
Yes, you're welcome.
Madam Chair, if I could just, on this, if a parent has not heard anything yet, and I know they need to call their school right, like today, um, if, or, or call us because if, they should have heard from someone and I know that numbers change and I know that that's one of our challenges, uh, so I'm glad you asked the question. So if you have not heard anything, um, you need to call your home school or call the district office, there's a number that's there on the, um, we have the number?
429 HELP.
429 HELP. And, um, do you know what that is? H E L P, do you know those numbers off the top of your head? No, okay.
4357.
What is it? 4257?
4357.
4357, that was one number off. So we would want the parents to call their home school or to call that number at the district, it's also on the webpage, so that we can work with them and get them the information that they need. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just had a question. With Dr. Prince, your wife goes online and it? Does that count as option two for two, two of your children or is, is this counted as one response?
It counts as one response. Basically, when, when you open the instructions, we have a record of that. So, uh, we've had, right now, the number there is 24,000, but as of last night, it was 30,000 people had gone onto our website, opened the instructions, okay? And then, um, out of that, approximately, uh, seven, 7,400 have, have gone on and completed the form.
Okay. Board members, I, just looking at the schools and the number of schools, it's just very interesting to see the percentages of students coming back in certain schools, predominantly the green zone area, so I just wanted you to see the differences in our community.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have any other?
No, I, I, I just, um, Clint just, um, sent me a text just because there was a question about hospitalizations. He mentioned there were 10 in, at Lawnwood, um, there's zero at St. Lucie Medical, uh, with less than 19 years of age, zero at, um, St. Lucie Medical Center and zero at, um, Cleveland Clinic. And I, that completes our presentation phase.
Thank you, that does complete our special orders of business and we will move on with our agenda and ask if there is a report from the EAS, EASL group, Mr. Freeland? This is fine. Oh, did you?
It didn't matter.
Good morning.
Good morning. So far?
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, uh, school board members, Superintendent Jen. I'm concerned because it's not really good enough to start face-to-face school when we don't have a real plan. We must begin virtually for the safety of our educators, their students, and all of our families and community. We spend a lot of time talking about how to keep our students safe in the plan. For instance, we've talked about extra sanitation in the classrooms. But the reality is that our custodial staff is often spread so thin that at times the most they can do is rush through and empty a trash can. So without a strategy for that, without a plan, that's just not good enough. What we're currently telling our educators who have underlying conditions is that they have to make a choice. They have to choose between potentially running into that burning building with their underlying conditions or take a year off without pay and be unable to keep a roof over their family's head to feed their children, to do the other things that they need to do. They'll lose their homes, their health insurance, and that's not a reasonable expectation and it's simply not good enough. We've talked about a plan to, to, we've talked about a plan to go virtual and it doesn't matter if we go virtual now or if we have to go virtual at some other point because of COVID in a school or in the district. because of COVID in a school or in the district. And that plan doesn't include anything for our non-instructional staff apparel professionals, bus aides, clerical personnel, and other critical support positions, not to mention an entire group of teachers who would be left out, our media specialists, our school psychologists, and our athletic directors, for example. Some of these people report back to work in six days, and not having a plan for what they'll do if we go to virtual is not good enough. If school personnel get sick with COVID, the district is currently arguing that employees would have to somehow prove that they got it from being in an enclosed, poorly ventilated space with hundreds of potential vectors, many who are asymptomatic, instead of from their 20-minute jaunt to publics. There's no reason even the, there's a reason even the federal government, who has done a tragically poor job of handling this epidemic, exempted school districts from the 500 employee limit for COVID, COVID leave, because it's astronomically more likely that an educator is going to get sick and get sick at work. The district's haggling over this is simply not good enough. We don't even have a plan for what teachers are supposed to do when a student shows up in their classroom without a mask. And it's obviously critical, since nobody entered this building without a mask and without getting their temperature taken. We're still thinking about what we're gonna do. Okay? That's not good enough. Not following the CDC guidelines for allowing people who are able to work from home is not good enough. All of those have to be part of our plan. So while all of this sounds very educator-centric, we have to remember that a student's learning environment is our work environment. If it's not safe for us, then it's not gonna be safe for them. And unfortunately, from where I sit, it appears to me that our union is the only one making a stand for a safer environment for our students and for educators. Hell, I don't even know who I'm supposed to talk to. Is it the Health Department? Is it the School Board? The safety of employees and students has become a hot potato lobbed back and forth between two government entities, and no one, no one is willing to take responsibility. Doing emails don't make us safer, and they certainly don't create a plan for the details. And that's not good enough. I'm gonna tell you what else is not good enough while we're talking about it. It's not good enough to have the Health Department come in, and as part of the presentation, present an edited video from Freedom Works to make a point. I know what the CDC said. They also said that we don't go back to school unless it's safe. They've also provided guidelines for that. I'm also not big on cherry pick data, being a math teacher that's very near and dear to my heart. So I'll give you some numbers right now. The average for St. Lucie for the last two weeks, the infection rate, or positive rate, is 13.95 percent, not 9.1. I'll also mention it's not here, but the infection rate for young people is around 33 percent right now. Okay, that data is important. Right? It's important to look at the data that's important. So to do otherwise is simply not good enough. Okay? Ultimately, a plan without the details worked out in the plan isn't a plan at all. It's wishful thinking. Okay? We need answers to these questions. We need to know who's making the decisions. We need to know how we're gonna take care of our employees, and our members, and our students. Okay? We have the big picture, but the devil's in the details, and to not have those is not good enough. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. Is there anyone here that wishes to address us from CWA? Okay, seeing none. Board members, we will move to our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Board members, we have a recommendation. Are there any items you wish to remove for separate discussion or vote? Seeing and hearing none. We have the recommendation before us to have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So maybe?
Thank you. I'll take one of those as a motion, and one as a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. And we now move to our superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, we've already had major information given to the board, so I will tell you that right now, we have a 61-page document, a Safe Return to School Plan, that is very detailed-oriented. And we are, we are putting the final touches on that. It'll be a fluid document that will also be posted on our webpage. It'll be available for all, all of our employees, as well as our parents. You all should have a hard copy of that at your, at your desk right now, at the table. That's been communicated with our bargaining groups as well. So to insinuate otherwise really may not be accurate information. We do have a detailed plan that we're working on. We'll continue to do that, and make sure that we have a safe plan when our schools do open in August, and, and working, again, it'll be a fluid document, that there could be additional information added to that as it come forwards, working with all of our employee groups, our instructors and our non-instructors, to make sure that we're ensuring the safety, and, you know, and having universal precautions in place for everyone, our children and our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And given that we are still under a state of emergency, let me read this document into the minutes at the conclusion of the superintendent's report. Board members, I would entertain a motion to confirm, approve, and ratify all of the superintendent's actions taken during the COVID-19 public health emergency for the period covered by his report, and authorizing the superintendent's continuation of such actions for so long as the governor's emergency declaration remains in effect. I have a motion.
So?
Thank you, Miss, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I have opposed.
Okay. So motion carries four to one. Mr. Harrell, do you have a report for us today?
So am I.
Thank you. And we will move then to our school board member reports. And Mr. Ingersoll, we'll begin with you today.
I'm good. I think I'm fast enough.
Okay. Dr. Mills?
For me, the loss of one life is too many. That's my thought.
Ms. Hilsen? Ms. Hensley?
Which item are we talking about?
Board member reports.
Oh, board member reports. I'll wait till the resolution regarding racism before I make my comments, okay?
Okay. All right. We have no other reports to come forth. We will move then, Ms. Hensley, to address the resolution to condemn racism and commit to an inclusive school environment for all.
If I may, Madam Chair, as you know, this has been a significant issue. The School Board Association decided to put together, excuse me, a resolution to affirm our stand on where we stand for total inclusion in school, and the environment is all are welcome. And so you've all seen this. It has been somewhat changed for us, as it was for the state template. We didn't use the state template exactly. But it is something that is, I think, crucial. We have, as you know, a new equity committee for School Board Association that is taking a very different stance than the Equity Committee from a few years ago. Also, as you know, I think, there's a push to get people to understand their own implicit bias. And through an ongoing collaboration, there's actually training for implicit bias, so that people can understand what they, what they actually know about themselves, or learn about themselves, and so we can actually help them inform potentially a better way forward. So this resolution, when we pass it today, it will be shared with our community partners, but it will also be shared back with the state, to make sure that they understand that we have taken a firm stance and reaffirm our current position.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. And do you bring the motion forward for this resolution?
I'll make the motion for it, yes.
And then do we have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Any conversation, board members? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. My apologies, I did operate a little bit out of order here, not being able to keep my glasses on the whole time. But we do need to go back to item 21.1, and address the superintendent's overall performance. This is the meeting where board members either give a satisfactory or an unsatisfactory given for his actions and his performance during this last school year. So, board members, I open it up for discussion at this point in time, letting you know that Superintendent Jen has met all of the medical expectations that are required. All of his contractual obligations have been fulfilled prior to this meeting, as far as conditions. Any conversation? Ms. Hilsen?
Yes, I'm, I can just say that I feel very, I'm, it's hard to put it into words, but Mr. Jen has given me a great deal of confidence. I believe in his performance as the superintendent. I feel as though he hears me when I speak with him. He is quick to call me back and give me information that I ask for. I have, I've just, he has earned confidence over a period of time with me, that I feel as though he is an excellent fit for St. Lucie County. And it's okay if I disagree with him, which I don't know that I really have. He just has a heart for our children. He has a heart for our community, he has a heart for our staff. And I know, and I believe he'll always do what's right for all of us, you know, in this position that we're in. But it is great to feel respected, and I have always felt respected from the time that Mr. Jen has come to St. Lucie County. And I just thank him for his tireless work in the St. Lucie County School Board.
Thank you, Ms. Hilsen. Ms. Hensley?
Having the privilege of working with some statewide groups, I think that our community needs to know where our superintendent and his team is, is held in the pecking order. I would say that from what I hear, that he is probably the top, because last year we were asked, "Why nobody nominated for the Superintendent of the Year?" And it's because we just didn't do any paperwork. But he is, his opinion is sought. He has accumulated the strongest team that is recognized as the strongest team in the state, not just by us, by other agencies. The partnerships that have been put together have been strengthened with his presence. So we only get to give him unsatisfactory or satisfactory, so I guess I'll go with satisfactory.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Dr. M, uh, Mr. Ingersoll?
Madam Chairman, we're just very fortunate to have Superintendent Jen, and I continue to look forward to working with him. Very satisfactory.
Thank you. Dr. Mills?
Superintendent Jen was honored this year by a nonprofit organization that held a program called Fathers Honoring Fathers. And that organization on which, that I serve on, we really were very careful about who we chose as honorees. He was chosen as one of the honorees because of the work that he has been doing the entire year with our educational department. For that reason, I definitely give him a satisfaction.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. And I too, as chairman, have had the, the honor and pleasure of working with Superintendent Jen alongside our board members, and have, it has just been a great feeling in our community, all-inclusive, nonprofits, profits, all across the board, to be out and about, and to hear people talk about the positive things that are happening in our schools, the positive things about our teachers, our staff, our security department. Every aspect of our school district is regarded very, very highly in this community, as well as statewide. And that is a direct reflection of you, Mr. Jen, and the team you have assembled, and the respect that they have for you and your leadership. So I too absolutely agree with a satisfactory performance evaluation at this time. But we know that we require a vote for that. We've all expressed our desire individually. But I do need to receive a motion in favor of a satisfactory performance evaluation for Mr. Jen for this school year.
I move you give Mr. Jen a satisfactory evaluation.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. We have all had opportunities for conversation, so I will ask for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries five-zero with sincere congratulations and thanks to you, Mr. Superintendent, for your leadership and your continued guidance. I would suspect this last few months has probably been the, the trial of all of your years in education, as it has been for all of us. And while there are no easy answers for that particular aspect, we do appreciate your guidance and your leadership, and your 24/7 attention to it, along with your team members. And keeping us in the loop is vitally, vitally important, and much appreciated. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that, you know, it's, it's really a team. It's a team of six. And, you know, the comments that the board makes are, you know, I appreciate those. And I appreciate you especially bringing recognition to our, to our staff, to our, we have some staff members here, to our, to our administrators, to our teachers. All of this is really a, a team, team effort to do the things that we're doing. And we are in very difficult times, and that's what we're, that's what you've hired me to do, is to try to make decisions and make recommendations. And, but it's a team, and this board is recognized across the state as a very solid, strong board. And I tell staff members all the time, never take a strong board for granted, because you, you can, you just never do that. So I appreciate what you do, and I appreciate your, your trust. I think we have a trusting relationship. I hear that from you all all the time, and that's important to me. And, you know, organizations are built on trust, not force. So we'll continue to try to do that. And hopefully, when I go home today, it'll be, it'll be six, so it'll be a unanimous vote. So I appreciate the, the five here, and I, and I'm honored to serve the community, and honored to begin my sixth year in St. Lucie County. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Superintendent.